To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Next I have is the approval of today's agenda.
Make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
With the technical issues, if we have to come back to something, we'll do so accordingly.
Okay. About as we're just informed that we are having a little technical difficulty with the Zoom, but it's the best we got right now. Correct. Any other discussion? There are no more. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Curious. Next I have is approval of claims for payment.
I'd make a motion to approve the claims for payment dated October 7th, 2020.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I had one question on the deep fryer on it, but it's been cleared out. The user for bearings. Any other discussion? There are no more. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I have no utility permits. Secondary roads.
Yeah, so I got plenty for you. So the ethanol plant there in Cleveland, they own that railroad. So they are going to be replacing their crossing on D-15. Closing it tomorrow. They're going to take until at least Saturday and then we will come in early next week and we have a company coming to repave the whole area. So that'll be closed for about a week. But railroad says let's do it. So I know plenty of citizens up there that are happy that'll be done. They probably won't want it closed for a week, but it's the price you pay. So that'll be going on tomorrow for next week. They got their 55 there between Hubbard and Providence and they should be starting on S-75 now. So we're getting everything buttoned up for the winter. And speaking of winter, I'm just letting you guys know like I'm giving them two more weeks so they're four hour or four days a week and they'll be switching back to five eights.
Next we have is the auction of county-owned equipment. Taylor, you brought this to us. We have three different departments. So Taylor has on their tire balancer, a bunch of pickups that don't currently run and a vehicle left. Lynn, I believe, has the Ford Fusion.
Yep.
Eighty thousand miles, 2012. And you, pictures will be on the internet?
Yes.
And also, we have a bunch of office business equipment that we can get rid of too that will be on the internet. You're asking that submit sealed written, sealed bids written to Hearn County Engineers Office, 708 16th Street, Eldora or at the Hearn County Maintenance Shop. Bids are due at 1:00 PM on October 28th, 2020 to be opened at the Hearn County Maintenance Shop at 409 17th Street, Eldora immediately at the deadline. Top three bidders of each item will then have the option to raise the bid. Payment will be due on the day of the auction payable to Hearn County. If that's the motion we want. Did I miss anything?
No.
And then you can visually see them, come out and see them, correct?
Yep.
Or see them on the internet, correct?
I'll make a calendar of that on the website and then I'll also make like a news item so that people can see it and they'll go to the Facebook page. The pictures will be easy to find.
Okay. And so all the motor vehicles clear titles, correct? Sold as is where it is.
Correct.
No implied warranties, nothing like that.
Correct.
Yep. I'd make a motion to approve the auction of county-owned equipment as presented with the terms and conditions as presented.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Also, we have the right to refuse any bid. Put that on there. Any other discussion? There are no more. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next I have is the Iowa River Trail supplemental agreement for additional services.
This is just an additional agreement that we have to to sign regarding the trail for the the grant that if they are going to, they are requiring an archaeological study to be done on the entire trail that goes through Harden County. So this would be the agreement for that service.
Can the DOT add it then?
Yes. At a cost of $6,990.
Okay, I'd make a motion to agree to the Iowa River Trail supplemental agreement for additional service to include an archaeological study.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Just for clarification, Trail Commission was paying $6,000, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Another funds. Any other discussion? There are no more. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
carries. Next is discussion action on addition of server.
You want me to?
Yeah.
Okay. The agenda items, I'll present those. As the counties represented the Central Iowa Community Services, that's our regional mental health board. We were petitioned, contacted by Sarah Gordo, Webster and Wright County, asking to join the Central Iowa Community Services Mental Health Region. And last week, we invited CICS CEO Russell Wood to come down and present the pros and cons of each county entering the region. And I think we had good deliberation and this discussion. One of the concerns that was brought up, and I think it's fair to address, was what Hancock County was going to be left to do because they're kind of in no man's land, but within hours of our meeting, it was determined that they were going to go with a different region in Northwest Iowa.
They requested.
They requested that way and that was assumed to be going to be accepted. So I had asked Chairman Grant out to how each county, instead of having them bundled together to be presented for the record, then to take back to Central Iowa Community Services to present to them, showing the support. I know some counties let their single representative on the CICS Board make that decision, but I thought this was a very significant decision that needed to be deliberated amongst the three of us. So so the next three items are the individual counties. So I'd make a motion to approve the addition of Sarah Gordo County to CICS pending acceptance by the full Board of CICS.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? What we're really doing here is just saying that we're agreeing with your decision that you're taking back to the board.
Right. You're, yeah, you're essentially giving me your vote of confidence that this is a good addition for the region.
Any other discussion? There are no more. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
carries.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the addition of Webster County to the CICS Region pending approval from the CICS Board.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? There are no more. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
carries.
Lance, the final one would be a motion to approve the addition of Wright County to the CICS Region pending the approval of the CICS Board.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
carries.
And I'll let you know after our next meeting here in a couple of weeks, the results.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Next I have on the agenda is motion on Zoom chat features.
Well, Lance, after conferring with County Attorney Meyer, I'd make a motion, and Angela will provide this to you after the meeting, to strike the proper balance between the public's need to communicate with its government and the public's need for transparency within its government. I move that whenever the Board of Supervisors conduct a public meeting via Zoom, the county shall utilize the only the everybody chat feature and the default administrator chat feature named Harden County. The chats from both features shall be downloaded and posted on the supervisor website as part of the packet with the corresponding meeting minutes. As part of this motion, the Board of Supervisors observes the right to strike from the chat record and therefore not post on its website any inappropriate content. Inappropriate chat content would include, for example, defamatory comments, curse words, commercial advertising, or electioneering.
Okay. I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
So this means that it's not going to be a part of our official minutes. Correct.
Correct.
Any other discussion?
I appreciate County Attorney Myers' guidance and, you know, the dialogue. You're welcome.
There are no more. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
carries. Next I have is the thesis renewal. We went through these. We have the renewal, the alternate one, alternate two. That's choices. Alternate one adds a little more to the plan and alternate two adds a little bit more to the plan.
I would make a motion to approve alternate two dash L five to our 2021 vision benefit thesis plan.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
carries. Next is acknowledge Teamsters Local 238 determination received from Attorney Anne Smizik of Aylers and Cooney.
Okay, I'd make a motion to acknowledge the Teamsters Local 238 determination received from Attorney Anne Smizik of Aylers and Cooney.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, we actually, Becca Junker received notification from Attorney Smizik that the Teamsters Local 238, which is the Sheriff's and Correctional Dispatchers Union, received a determination from the Purb Board that they will be decertified in June of 2021.
Yep.
And so this was, so I think it's important to note that this wasn't a county thing doing this. This was something that their union did.
Any other discussion? There are no more. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
carries. Next I have is change of status auditor's office.
We have two changes status for the auditor's office. I'll make the motion to approve the change of status effective October 15th, 2020 for Jamie Geisler. She's will be a full-time employee, the accounting and county's payable clerk at $17.43 an hour with a performance review in six months with a possible salary increase.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
carries.
And then the second change of status would be effective October 5th, 2020 for current employee Becca Junker. She is an exempt employee. She's full-time. And her salary rate would be going to $21.82 an hour. Becca's been with the auditor's office for two years and she's learned many aspects of the office. Make her the ideal candidate to be a deputy.
I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Is that deputy one? First deputy.
Right, so she would be going to deputy status.
Any other discussion? There are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
carries. Next I have is change of status conservation.
I'd make a motion to approve the hiring of Brett Lawrence as a conservation park tech effective October 5th, 2020 at the rate of $14 an hour. He will be working for Conservation Department two days a week. His first day will be Monday, October 5th.
I'm going to second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
carries. Now I have is change of status secondary road.
Make a motion to approve the change of status for Jerry Hammond. He's, he will be retiring. He's currently a truck driver at 2250 an hour and that will be effective December 31st, 2020.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Thank him first.
Tony, 29 years.
Twenty nine.
Twenty nine and a half.
Yep.
Any other discussion? There are no more. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
carries. Next I have the emergency management update.
All right. I'll start with COVID. I think the email, and I forgot to bring the paper with me, but the email on Friday said last week we had 21 new cases last week. We've increased the group that we turned Monday morning, the emergency operations group. We continue to try and look at trends and see if we can figure out what's going on. But we're not, we're not getting a handle on that as far as any specifics that are in there. I would say that part of it is that we continue to get this from people within the county government and public is that if somebody goes to get tested, that means that they had some reason that they thought they needed a test for COVID and that means that they need to stay home until their test results come back. And even if they come back negative, that doesn't guarantee it. Because if you go get tested, if I'm exposed to you today, the recommendation is that I wait 48 hours before I go get tested. Because you, you need that 48-hour period before you'll test positive even at a minimum. So if I'm exposed today, then I need to wait 48 hours. But if I'm exposed today, that also means that I stay home until I get the test or monitor symptoms and wear a mask. But after the test, it is in the paperwork that comes from Test Iowa. It comes from your physician or the hospital, whoever does the test. They either remain at home isolated until the test results come back. And then if you're positive, it is a, I think it's a 10-day isolation or 10-day quarantine now. And then you have to be symptom-free without any fever-reducing agents for 72 hours. The problem is, is that we're hearing a lot about people going and getting tested and then still going out in the community. And if you thought that it was important to get a test, you need to stay home. So we're emphasizing that. There was a press, there have been two press releases go out from Public Health and we make our press releases from Public Health Emergency Management. You guys is the Harden County and the Harden County Sheriff's Office. Trying to continue to push the message about the importance of staying home. The other part is that we need people to continue to understand just basic hygiene. Basic hand washing, cover your cough, stay at least six feet from other people, wear a mask if you can't social distance, limit the number of people that you're around and monitor symptoms. And if you get any symptoms, then remain home. All, so even when we started this back in March, the first signs that were required to be put on doors of any business, any gathering place, whatever, are the stop signs that say if you have any symptoms, if you're sick, don't come in. And so we continue to emphasize that and push those out. We've been pushing it out on Facebook through all the agencies, trying to get that understood. So that's the, that's the update on the COVID. One last piece of the COVID is that local public health had their briefing with Iowa Department of Public Health yesterday and they continue to work on provider agreements for the vaccine, which will which they anticipate coming out by mid-November, but we all know how that goes with companies and FDA approval and all of that. So but public health's been working really hard on getting the Harden County points of dispensing plan up and current and having it planned out of how when those vaccines come out, how they'll be given and then when the priority groups are given by IDPH, then it will be advertised and people will be able to get their vaccines. At this point, they have, and this was yesterday's numbers, is that there are 171 healthcare providers that have started the provider agreement. There are 106 provider agreements that are completed and submitted with IDPH and there are 82 that have been approved through IDPH at this point, but it takes some time to get all of them. And it takes IDPH some time to get through all of the agreement stuff to make sure that it's an approved agreement for dispensing vaccine. So in the duration, I received a phone call Monday night from Amy Bartlett at IDPH at Iowa Homeland Security that FEMA had denied our appeal for individual assistance. So we will not be getting FEMA individual assistance. We've continued with our public assistance, but they didn't feel that even after the reevaluation that it was enough to put us into the individual assistance program. So the only county, so there was three counties in that appeal. Clinton County, Jones County and Harden County. Clinton County is the only county that got added in with the appeals. Everybody continues to work. The application period closes on Saturday for the public assistance. Once that application period closes, then Homeland Security will send out project managers to meet with each of the applicants and write the scope of the projects that FEMA will be reimbursing on. So I anticipate that. It closes on Saturday, so I don't anticipate meeting until not next week, but the week after that. I would give them at least a week to process through those and then start sending out project managers. So probably the last week. That'd be the last week of October that I think we will probably see having meetings with each of the communities that are involved and conservation.
Sounds good. Good luck. Next we have is a request for, did you have any more to tell us?
No, not on that.
Did we have any questions to ask?
I didn't. I think I have the next slide.
Next I have is a request for county to put $6,000 to acoustic tile project at EOC building. Why don't you go through this for a moment for us, just while you're getting to the request?
Okay, so when I started a year ago, the building was four walls, cement floor, all sheetrock. We've added well, the grant that we used, we've added $30,000 of technology into there with training, technology and things like that. At this point, when COVID came around, then that was the largest room around. And so as we started reopening and trying to find places for groups larger than 10, we started using that room. We've used it for, we obviously use it for the commission meetings. And then court services also started using it as of September. We've been at it a couple of weeks. They've had two or three jury selections in there. They had one trial in there. It was a short half-day or day and a half trial. And most of the problem is that it is still has a lot of echo to it. So it's hard to be able to talk to a group. The room is a 40 by 50 room and it's got 14-foot ceilings. And so when you're speaking, it all it does is bounce off of the walls. And if more than one person starts to talk, excuse me, if more than one person starts to talk, it gets to be almost unintelligible. So the commission last spring, I think just before COVID or maybe in the winter, we asked audio engineering group out of Ames to come in and do a, a study of the room and give us recommendations on what it would take to cut that, what they call reverb or to us echo down to an intelligible amount. And so you see that in one of the handouts is the audio and it's labeled the audio in audio engineering group reverberation assessment and recommendations. And if you look at page three, it shows what the reverb in the room now is in those different hertzes of sound. So they measured it from very low pitches to very high pitches. And at the very, well, what I'm going to call the lowest, just because it's a lower number, I'm, I'm not a sound guy by any means, but at the very lowest of 125 hertz, we go from a 1.07 down to a 1.06. So not a lot in the low end. But when you go to the high end, the 4,000, we go from a 1.06 down to a .6. So we cut that considerably. And if you look across all of like the 2,000, well, actually 500 to 2,000, we cut those by half or more by putting the recommended acoustical tiles in and the amount and the square footage that it recommends. So I asked them also at the same time to give us a recommendation of what that looked like. And so I don't have it in the packet, but it was in the email and the do you have a pull-up? Okay. So the front page of it, so if you see the front page of it, it shows the north wall and that's where all of our technology is at. And we typically use the north side of the room for our presentation side. That's where Zoom's been. That's where the whiteboards and the smart boards at. And so you see down at the bottom that it has three by three squares down there. We're asking not, we're, we've asked them to price out so that it puts three by four foot up between the TVs and over in the far left corner. So there won't be any down low. We still have that space to either put bulletin boards or more whiteboard or whatever. Then when you turn the page over, that is the east wall and that is the east wall, and that's the largest wall in the facility without any breaks in it. And so that one takes the most amount of panels. And that'll be two, two sets of, two rows of panels minus the three that are actually over the emergency management banner that's hanging on the wall presently. And then on the south wall, that is completely as designed. We will add one right above the light switch over on the far right of the picture by the office door. We'll add one over there to take up some of what we've taken out of the low area over on the north wall. And then the last wall is the new wall that was put in. It's a short wall. Excuse me. We added, one of the things we did with the project to fix that room up for meeting space was to put a 10-foot 10-foot wide storage area in there with a loft on top. So we took advantage of that tall ceiling in that we could put stuff inside the closet, but then stuff that we weren't ever going to use, or at least seldom use, like old records and things that we can still get to, but didn't need access to easily, we put up on that loft. So there's a above the door, there's a loft that goes clear back in that 10 feet. But we're going to put soundproofing on that wall also. So that's the, that's the project. And with those panels in there, the number that I got from him a few weeks back was just a guesstimate of it. And he, this group works with three different providers of acoustical tile. So they're doing the bidding, they're, they're doing the look for the cheapest manufacturer. And $12,000, or $12,100, I think, is the number that actually came out. But $12,000 is what the project would be. So part of this comes from us having, from emergency management, having received the emergency management performance grant, 2020 supplemental, under COVID. And so they gave us, we applied for it, but we received the grant. The grant specifically is $13,000. That was a little more than was put into the project worksheets because we were just, at the beginning of the project, it was, you're going to get $10,000. But when it came down to it, because of counties not applying, they reallocated that money out. So we are receiving $13,500 for our project. So that really moves the whole project up to a $26,000 project because it's a match project. And so what I asked for, had discussions about it, and in the project, I gave you a sheet this morning that shows the EMPG worksheet on what our projects under that 20,000 was. And in there was interoperable communications equipment to put in the EOC. So to make the EOC be able to communicate in time of disaster, we were going to put a radio system in there that was interoperable with the state system and with our county system. That cost was $6,000. I've sent a request to the state to change the scope of the project to allow us to put the acoustical tiles in because of using this room more for social distancing in the COVID world. So I've asked for a change of scope of project and take the communication portion out at 6,000 and move that over to this project of $12,000. So we've had, we, emergency management has $6,000 in the project, mask at the county since we're this may not come out right, but since the county is also using that building, and you guys held a landowner drainage meeting in there and didn't like the sound of it and didn't want to go back. But the court system loves the way that it's set up. Matt and Michael and Jody have done a great job in getting that room reset so that we can actually use it a long way. And with the technology, we're able to move out into the garage. So we have 30 juror, 30 potential jurors in the EOC proper. And then we have another 30 potential jurors setting out in the garage. And they have, so we zoom it, and they're able to hear out in the garage all the questions and all of that. The problem still is that when you do that, because of the echo in the EOC, it's terrible to hear over the Zoom out in the garage. So asking to, to get this reverb echo problem taken care of as soon as possible.
And, and along with this 6,000, I asked you to talk to Jessica, the auditor.
Yes.
And
she says there's $6,000 out there. It just depends on where you want to take it from.
Just making sure we can take it from someone.
Yeah.
We need, we need to do an amendment that I didn't put on this. I didn't put on to set the date yet.
And
it needs to be in December.
We're gonna, so in addition to that, emergency management is going to also be doing an amendment because of all COVID expenses. I think the number is off the top of my head, but it was almost $30,000 that we've spent so far in COVID expenses. And some of that money, around 12,000 of that, has been reimbursed by Green Belt Home Care because they were able to use public health dollars to be able to pay for PPE. But also remember that I did the grant. And so county expenses, like the glass in the windows, some of the PPE, some of the cleaning supplies are in that. So that, when we get, when that grant paperwork goes in for our reimbursement, then we'll separate that back out. And some of that will come back to the county as reimbursement for your projects, and some of it will come back for the projects that we did under the EMA specific.
Talking to you yesterday, you also said something about a house that lies to the south of the EOC building, and our department is willing to burn it down?
Yes. So do you want to continue that with this, or do you want to make that a different discussion? I don't want to get things too
Let's continue with what we're doing.
But I don't want to get too far away from where we're at.
So you have a request for $6,000 for acoustic tile project at the EOC building?
Yes.
I could entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the county putting, putting in $6,000 for the acoustic tile at the EOC building. And we'll work with the county auditor to determine where those funds will be pulled from.
I will second that. It's been moved and segmented. Any discussion?
I think it's great improvement. I mean, the landowners meeting, you were there for part of it. It was frustrating and and we can improve it, improve facilities, continuity of operations, and I think we're making a good decision.
And we'll utilize the building.
And you're gonna, we're using it for the elections in November. So I'm, I'm hoping that with this approval, and hopefully I can get approval from the state back soon enough that we can maybe get these tiles ordered in. But labor, I guess I need to go back to that for just a second, but the labor for this will come from us directly. Jody and I have talked about it, Dave and I have talked about it, and so we've kind of thrown some people under the bus, but JD, Dave, Jody, and myself, and maybe some other help we can enlist to actually just put the plastic or J-Tech channel on the wall, and then the panels just hang on that. So it's really just a matter of getting a screw gun, stud finder, and a laser level, and going around and screwing the the plastic through the wall and hanging these panels up after they're in. That should be done in a day.
And vicious. And let's, let's remind everybody that the building is owned by the county, not by the emergency management, and it's two different entities.
Correct.
So it is our building.
I think this is just another tool that gives Thomas and anybody using it a chance to succeed there. I know that you've had some firefighter one classes there, and it would probably have been a whole lot more productive, you know?
Yes.
But you don't make the best of it.
Yeah, we had We had 20, 29 people in the, in the firefighter one class.
And keep in mind, prior to Thomas being here, that was a giant storage building that you, there were just kind of tunnels or aisles, walking through everything that we stored in there.
Very expensive warehouse.
Exactly. So it's finally being used for its original purpose.
Any other discussion? Here is no more. I'll bear say aye.
Aye.
Most serious. I want to go back to that
Yes.
house and
So one of the problems with the building where it's at, and it's not anything we can fix, it's there. But the parking around that is very limited. And so back when that building was, was built, the house beside it was Habitat for Humanity. Emergency management at that time purchased that house because there, no, it's not, it can't be used as a residence because of the lot lines have been infringed on. And so I talked to the, I had the Hardin County Fire Association meeting there the other day. Talked to the Eldora Fire Chief, Aaron Plemons. They'd be more than willing to take that and use it as a training burn. The house is in good enough shape that we could do smoke training in there first before burning it down. So the newer firefighters, or even the older firefighters that haven't been in SCBA, we can smoke that up with a theatrical smoke and train on SCBA, search and rescue in that house, and then burn it down after that. We've got Renee, Jody, Dave, and I, and I think Rocky was with us. We went in there the other day. There isn't anything left in there that's of value. That was all taken out prior. Jody took all the valuable stuff out of, quote unquote, valuable stuff out of there, and it was on a county auction several years back. So it's ready to be burned down and then use that space for parking lot. Grade it and hopefully get an engineer that can engineer that leveling and the grade of it so that we can use it for, at least gravel it for a parking lot for the time being. And then in addition, having a discussion with auditor Laura was that the auditor's office has had, or at least the county has had money in the budget over the last several years for a parking lot across the street to the west, or, or which is on the north side of the jail. That was not able to be used for many years because there was a filling station or something there. So it was a hazardous site, but they got, you got clearance on that. So now we can put a parking lot over there also. So yeah, the fire department's willing to burn that down, but it is your building and your ground.
So we can entertain a motion at another meeting as to what we want to do on that. I just wanted to get it out there.
Yep. And that would, I think we've looked, and I think that the lot to the west would be at least 16 cars. And then probably that lot to the south of that building would be able to hold another 10 or 12 cars at least. So that would give good parking. And putting a parking lot there and at the place north of the jail would leave county parking lot within walking distance of the courthouse, and then the parking spaces around the front of the especially on the west, the east side of the courthouse would be open to public to utilize services of the county.
And after hours, the movie theaters right across the road?
Yes. Yeah, that wouldn't matter. Wouldn't make any difference if Well, thank you. And it's a lot of stuff at one time. It is, but when the grants come open, it's not, it's kind of one of those things that if you can get some of the money from federal dollars, then you take what you get.
And any other
Yeah.
Were there any other questions? Let's go to public comments. Allow people to speak. Is there anybody on here that we don't have minutes on? I'm getting names. Are they available to unmute themselves?
Not yet.
Can we unmute manually? Are we ready?
No.
There.
We're good. So I believe at this point, you're able to unmute yourself.
I have a comment.
This is Donna.
Donna, go ahead.
Um, the FDA has stated that they are going to stick with their original guidelines, which include a two-month time period for proofing the vaccine. I just thought I'd let Thomas know that. Iowa, yesterday, was the fourth highest state in the country for their virus percentage. Their new positives. Iowa today passed 1,400 deaths, and we have the second one in our county. The last two days, 150 people have been admitted to the hospital. More than two dozen of the White House staff have tested positive for this virus recently. And an unknown number of others that aren't on the direct staff. All but one of our Pentagon heads are currently in quarantine. If I were to stay home, I would not be spreading this disease. If I were to wear a mask, I am not contributing to the virus. Those that whine it is their constitutional right to go maskless are much more likely to spread this virus than those of us who follow the rules. They complain about their constitutional rights. The two dead people from this county are the only ones who have the right to complain about their constitutional rights. Thomas and our county health department can put out all the releases and guidances they want. However, However, when you have a locally elected official chatting against that info, where does that leave us? This virus is not spread by fear. It is not spread by an overabundance of caution. This virus is spread by complacency and by those who have, who absolutely fail to care about their fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Julie Dunn, I have a comment. Can you hear me? Okay, I went into vote on Monday in the afternoon and I think there was some confusion. The armed guard at the door said I would have to wait because there were already three people in there voting, which is fine, I can do that. But then he asked for my cell phone number, which I do not give out my cell phone number. Some people don't have cell phones, so I said, no, I don't give out my cell phone number. And then he said, well, I may not be admitted to the building. And that you can't require a phone number to allow someone to vote. So, and to tell people that they may not be admitted to the building seems to put up a barrier to voting and may discourage some people from voting. As you know, I'm outspoken, so of course I will speak out, but others may just decide not to vote. It's not worth a hassle. Maybe they don't have a cell phone. Maybe we don't have a landline, whatever. I understand the contact tracing idea of that. But if you have a name, then and the person is registered to vote, then they already have the information needed for contact tracing. So kind of demanding a cell phone number is, is not necessary and could be seen as a, as a roadblock admission to the building. Some people may not be familiar with their voting rights and they may decide to just walk away. So I'm wondering, does the contractor have written instructions or procedures to follow for voters, for people who want to vote? And will the county provide written procedures? So there's no misunderstandings going forward. Are masks required to be, are masks required for admission to the, to the courthouse and do people have to leave their masks on? Because actually the man next to me voting did not have a mask on, so do you? My question is, in the end, will the county provide written instruction as soon as possible to, to not require or ask for a phone number, a cell phone number for people entering the courthouse to vote?
I'm questioning, would they need the cell phone number? Since you, Julie, since you had to wait and the waiting is asked to be outside, if the cell phone number is so that they can call you when it's your turn to come in and vote? I don't know. Do you have anything set up for that, Jessica?
I attempted to find the answer yesterday as to why she was even asked for a cell phone number because my office does not require that. And I was honestly surprised that they had asked a voter for that because that was not my instruction. So I reached out to County Attorney Meyer. I did not call Thomas, but I see he's at the podium, so I'll let him answer. But as far as I was under the impression, the only reason that they would have asked for it might have been to let them know when their turn was ready. Other than that, I have no reason for them to take a phone number from any voter.
Because I know the departments have the cards, you know.
Yes.
For people.
We have cards too. We have three of them, but I know that sometimes when people stack up, they have to wait in their car. But I at no time have told anyone that they needed to provide a phone number. And I've not spoken with any of Carrie's staff to tell them that they need to require it. So I was honestly shocked to learn that this happened. And, and it's unfortunate, but like I said, I reached out yesterday to find the answer. I don't have the answer yet as to why it happened. And I'll let him speak because he's at the podium.
I offered to stand, just stand outside the entryway and then he could wave me in. So, so it, I understand why he might ask, but in order to vote, you do not have to offer that information if you choose not to.
I agree with that.
And so will there be a written procedure or instructions given to the contractor to not, to, to say that you may not be admitted to the building because of course I was? So to say that can be, feel intimidating. And so will there be written instruction for admission to the courthouse for voting?
Thomas, go ahead.
So two things. Number one, I appreciate that you brought it up. No, the statement of that you won't be admitted without a phone number is not correct. But the reason that they're doing the phone number is that that is the procedure across the board for all the departments is that if you're told to wait, then they get a phone number so that they, so that they can contact you when they get a a card back from upstairs, then they can contact you. And if you're sitting in your car or wherever you might be, if you're not sitting on the bench outside where they see you, then they can contact you by phone. It is not a requirement to vote. It's not, it is, it's spillover from what the procedures are for the rest of the courthouse is that we're offering the courtesy to be able to call you and notify you that we have the card back and you can come in to vote. The reason that there is no masks or, let me back up. The reason that there is some masks and others not masked is the very reason that there's only three voting places upstairs is for social distancing. So you'll notice that the people that are at the desk or at the table up there, all three of the auditor staff are wearing masks as everybody comes to them. And then you get your paper, you go over and vote. You put it in the box or whatever, you put it in the envelope or the box or whatever. But the voting booths are more than six feet apart, so there's social distance in there so people do not have to wear the mask. So it's not mandatory for a mask in our buildings. It's not mandatory for a mask in our county. But people that wear masks are more than welcome to come in. But the phone number is just a courtesy thing. And if you don't want to give a phone number, that's fine. If you want to sit where they can see you, then they can call you, they can wave you in. But if you go back to your car, they have no way of being able to know where you parked and they're not able to go run around the block and find people in cars.
Will there be written instruction to the contractor that they cannot say you may not be admitted to the building?
I would be happy to email Carrie the point of contact for them and let them know that they cannot require that of anyone. I'm happy to do that.
Okay, all right.
It won't be a policy per se because I don't have that authority to make policy for the county. But I am most happy to email Carrie and she can make sure that that's dispersed to every single one of her, her employees.
You, you can't do that as a policy? You can't have written instruction?
No, I can give her written instructions. What I'm saying is it can't, it can't be a policy. I'm not allowed to make policy, only the supervisors can. But as the auditor, I'm more than happy to provide written instruction by email. Now whether or not they follow through on that, I have no teeth. I, I, I can't make policy. That's, that's up for the supervisors.
Oh, oh, see, because I can't see who's speaking, so.
Me and Jessica.
So I didn't know who was speaking, but yes, the supervisors could, could easily do that. I would assume. So, but there's, there's. Okay, yeah, I just wanted, I just want to stress that it is feels intimidating. Could be seen as a roadblock and that situation needs to be remedied. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
This, this is Pauline Lloyd. I guess I'd also like to make a comment about that telephone number. People don't like to give out their numbers. And when we go to the courthouse, we're, we're always, we're it's more or less demanded that we give a phone number before entering the courthouse. So I'm kind of with Julie on that. Why do we have to give a number to go see someone when we're already giving our name and everything else? I'm sure since we're giving our name, we're signing in at the time that we're going up to see someone. We're a small county. I'm sure you can get our, our name, address and that pretty easily if something goes wrong and contact us. I don't feel we need to have our telephone number out there.
My only comment to be, to that would be, Pauline, right, for right now, it's probably, you know, if you wanted to come to the courthouse and you have to wait for a card in order to go to the office that you need to do business with, you can easily wait outside. And meaning whatever you might want to go into your car or say this winter, if we're still not open and it's still by appointment only, you're not going to want to stand out in freezing cold, I wouldn't think. And like Thomas had said, it's not going to be easy. I mean, if you come up and your turn isn't up yet to get a card, it's not going to be easy for the person at the door to go out and find out which car you're in around the courthouse square to let you know that it's your turn. So it's a convenience thing, I guess. And they don't record your phone number anywhere. It's, it's only for the time that you're here. And once that day is done, I'm sure that's probably all shredded. I don't know what the process is.
If somebody came up with COVID, they would have contact numbers of people who to call.
Well, that's, okay, so that is true.
It's for their convenience, more or ours.
So.
You have our name, so all you have to do is look up in the phone book and call us.
Not everyone has a home phone anymore. I'm, I'm finding that out just trying to contact people even personally that there's a lot of people that don't have a home phone anymore. It's only cell phones, so.
Okay, but you're, you're not demanding that we wear masks or anything or social distance or anything. So what does it matter if there's ten, twelve of us all waiting in there anyway?
We do do social distancing. That's why we only allow so many people in the courthouse at one time. And that's why we're doing that card system because, yes, and there are stickers on the floor as far as social distancing. So yes, we are doing that. And that's, that's the main reason for a lot of this.
So, so let me get this straight. So you do do social distancing, but you don't, but the Board of Supervisors doesn't do the mask?
Correct.
But you do realize that even by social distancing, that your droplets go more than six feet apart?
Well, we're not telling anyone that they can't wear a mask.
I'm going to cut this part short. I'm not going to get into debate over whether we're going to have masks to do over a public comment. The comment was about taking phone numbers at the door. My personal opinion is the phone numbers are for their convenience, not ours. That, that was the question. If you don't give a phone number, I don't know that it's not required or that it is required we have a phone number. It's for, it's for your safety or your convenience. It's not for the convenience of the county. If COVID does come through the courthouse, we have a number and a list of contacts of who to contact with phone numbers.
Well, it's, it's kind of like two different, we kind of feel like two different things. Like you're throwing one thing at us and then throwing, you're saying one thing and then doing another. I mean, it's kind of like we need to get on the same page, I feel like.
I, I would like to weigh in. This is Michelle. And we ask for a phone number for our customers that are making appointments for motor vehicle and driver's license. Driver's license, we contact the people as a courtesy the day before, a couple of days before their appointment to remind them that they have an appointment. People have really enjoyed having the appointments. They don't have to wait at our office. And that phone number just provides us with the opportunity to remind them that they have an appointment with the office. And if you don't want to give us a phone number, that, that's your choice. We just ask for it for the purposes of us being able to contact you. Also, if I had a problem where I was totally understaffed, maybe somebody got sick, somebody was on vacation. And if we had overbooked appointments and didn't have enough staff to attend to the customers, then we would be able to call you and tell you that, you know, we need to reschedule you, get you a different appointment so we can service you at an appropriate time or appropriate manner. And Pauline, the other day when you came in to the courthouse, you came to the courthouse without a mask. I'm just going to put that out there. I don't care if you wear a mask or you don't wear a mask. That's your choice. But you have been hounding us here at the county about everybody being required to wear a mask. In the day that you came to your, to the courthouse without an appointment, we got you in and you came to the courthouse without your mask. I'm, that's all I'm going to say. And I just want to know the people out there that we are open to the public to serve them the best that we can. We are trying to protect them as much as we can. It's your right to wear a mask. It's your right to not wear a mask. That is my opinion only and that's where I'm at. We put up protective measures in all the offices. We have signs to social distance. We are having badges at the door to only allow certain amount of people into the courthouse. We are trying our best to do the best we can to service all the people in Harden County. Thank you.
And, and the reason I did that was because I wanted to see if that was going to come back at me or not. I, I did that.
Public comments are over at this point. We have other business. It's been asked if we take other business after our closed-door meeting later at ten twenty. We have ten minutes to go till then. And in other business, I believe that we want to talk about boards and commissions as well.
Correct. Yep. I just, we used to do our updates and I just had a few things that, you know, I wanted to bring up, but with the schedule we're on. But well, my plan was to make a motion to recess.
I have a motion. It's been moved and seconded to recess till ten, ten twenty when we come to the closed meeting. And then when we come out of closed meeting, we will come to other business. Hearing no more. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most carries for recess. Ten, twenty-one and the I can entertain a motion.
I make a motion to go into closed session under Iowa Code twenty-one point seven, twenty-one point five sub one sub C regarding litigation.
I will second it.
They moved it seconded, again, discussion. Hearing done. Roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Please close.
So I just had a couple of things. Green Belt Home Care, things are picking up, good referrals. One of the things that was brought up during the audit process, the IRS and the state wondered if Green Belt was still a nonprofit. So the IRS had to be contacted a couple of times for a determination if they're still nonprofit. And it has been affirmed that they still will remain a nonprofit. So some of those worries are done and gone. So, but yeah, things are moving well. They've gotten a couple of good grants to employ one person that will just do well child promotion and checks. So we're serving a whole lot more kids. And hopefully for this person is, by credentials, should be able to recognize some of the mental health issues that could be going on with the COVID homeschool, virtual school stuff. So that's a good thing. EMS, not a whole lot going on there. The one thing that I can't seem to find is if they claim their money from last year. So really not sure if they.
Well, after mid-year half time, I haven't got the response. So just putting that on their fire association, nothing new.
What, what, when you say last year, what?
So the fiscal year, last fiscal year, I'm not sure they submitted.
They ended in June of this year.
So if they didn't submit it, it's money gone?
Correct.
Yep.
Fire, nothing. CICS, one of the important things that was brought up at our last meeting was there's more cares money out there for school districts. So one of them that actually applied and was awarded a significant amount of money was Iowa Falls Alden. So with having some kids doing schooling from home, they applied for a grant to pay some substitute teachers to come into the classrooms while the regular staff would go to a separate area and videotape lessons. That way the teachers weren't there till eight, nine at night, causing more mental health issues. Maybe not so much for the kids, but they're human beings too. So they, Iowa Falls Alden was awarded some money to kind of get those teachers some relief in the classroom so they can continue to get quality lessons out to the remote learners. They also were funded some money for some equipment to use in the gym, knowing that recess outside will probably be limited over the winter, but wanted to keep the kids moving and not, hey, sit in the classroom another hour a day. So they bought some stuff for that. And I didn't know, Russell, nobody had really told me anything about this. And evidently the local coordinators and stuff had sent stuff out. But anyway, I sent it out again to Dr. Z here at the school. And I sent it to a couple of school board members. So they knew it was out there. I know they're probably inundated with everything, but there's a lot of money to be had. Can you set the agenda? I can.
Well, it's area. It was a 232.
Yeah.
But.
If you give me the email, I'll send it up to Tony and his staff.
Okay. Well, it doesn't go to Tony and go to the school system.
Okay.
For them. It's two different.
Right. But as long as it gets out there.
Yeah.
And so, but the only stipulation is like your home district office has to be in one of our counties. So like BCL would.
Don't worry about it.
Right.
Better than Black Hawk.
Yep.
What about the, well, I mean, because most of our school districts cross the county line.
Right. And so it's Grundy County, so BCL's offices and Conrads, and they're not in our region. Now, I think the region has some of the same resources. Whether they're doing a very good job promoting them, that's unfortunately not my problem today. So senior issues, we haven't met. I'm due to bring treats this week. I'm not sure, or next week. I'm not sure how that's going to work. I asked.
Yeah. If they don't meet, you can bring them here.
No, yeah. And NRG, with the hazmat, we've had a couple of issues that are under review that people calling for the hazmat team that weren't authorized to call the hazmat team and have incurred some pretty big bills for some of the counties. And so.
Were we one of those?
No, we were not.
Okay. Maybe I just heard about.
Yeah. The one, the perfect example is up in Butler County, Clarksville police officer stopped the car and had a bunch of chemicals, pills, like rolling meth lab. And instead of calling their emergency management coordinator and the sheriff and maybe the fire department to determine if they really needed two semis and, you know, six Waterloo firefighters and an ambulance from Waterloo Fire there, they just called anyway. And so Butler County got a really big bill. And so now the county attorney is saying, well, we'd like this person that did have drug paraphernalia and precursors to pay it.
Oh, yeah.
Where are you going to get that money? So that's one of those.
Yeah, let them sell more drugs so they can afford to pay the bill.
Yeah. So it's one of those things where we need to, we, I think we've done a good job. I brought it up at both the fire and EMS meetings that we've got to do better job communicating and making sure that, you know, for the FS building thing here, I think that was legitimate time to call the hazmat team. But, you know, some of these things just need another one or two sets of eyes before you go out and call in the big boys.
Right.
And then, I'm not sure this is a committee commission, but on the ATV, UTV thing, I, Grundy County just passed something. And so just yesterday, I don't know if anybody else got it, but I got text messages with the screenshots of the Grundy used paper. Hey, is it our turn yet? So I don't know if we want to have a work session on it and allow the stakeholders to have a voice and then have Daryl explain.
Daryl and Taylor.
And Dave.
We need the county engineer.
Yep.
In on this. Obviously the sheriff would be in on this enforcement of it. Our county attorney, got to have Angela. So.
Angela. So my suggestion is waiting till after the election and having, you know, a work session and let the public, whether Zoom or we try to bring a handful of people in and have a honest to goodness discussion about it.
Well, that one, that one you sent off to us from, I forget where.
Bremer.
Bremer County. It was pretty good ordinance.
Yeah.
There's a few things I would have critiqued in it.
Yep. And Dave and Taylor both had things, but I think that's what makes the democratic process good. If you find something that's good, that you can make a little better.
Well.
Congratulations.
I honestly believe if we're going to do an ordinance, one, that it'd be county ordinance and we'd sell county tags.
Yep. And Dave and Taylor both agreed with that part. Make it so those tags would offset any administrative costs of doing it. So.
And then also, I know we got a during meeting coming up. Also, I would look at penalties.
Yep.
Which would be pulling the tags, obviously. But there's going to be designated roads and that's where the county engineer needs to come in. Which roads are safe for these ATVs?
Right.
Another thing I would look at on this would be, if you're going to put a UTV, I shouldn't say ATV, UTV, alternate vehicles side by sides. If you're going to put them on, I believe they should yield to all.
Agreed.
Whether it's tractors, there is no disputing who has a right of way at an intersection.
Right.
They're low man on a total full lot there.
So as long as I think we can come to a agreement that we're willing to listen after the election, have that discussion. Great. Last thing, just out of respect to time, is the concern with the umbilical hose situation that Nick Shute, he called me, he's very respectful. I know he stopped and spoke to Taylor. His concern, I think is justified, that if we have a policy and you're supposed to get a permit and stuff, what's the penalty? And who's enforcing it? And so I think that's something for additional discussion. I did call a couple of manure applicators and I said, hey, do you know who's working? Because Nick was very precise. He's like, this is where the farm is. And so I called a couple of people. And to narrow it down, I believe that there's a couple of operators out of Minnesota that have come down that are working on contract now that, you know, may be the culprits. I don't want to give our local manure applicator's a bad name if it's not them. So I think that's something for additional discussion as well. And, and I think Nick was being very respectful, very, you know, decent about it. And I guess, you know, he and I came up with the fact that, yeah.
I think that's their phone number.
What's that?
I think that's their phone number. That's what you're talking about.
I don't know who it is. Nobody gave me any names. But, you know, Nick and I both agreed that if you have a speed limit, you should follow it. And in the rules, Dave McDaniel's, Iowa State Patrol, the local police are going to enforce it. If we have a policy, we should probably designate who is supposed to enforce it and what the fractions are. And Attorney Meyer, at the end of the day, has to prosecute it, just like he did the X Avenue Bridge situation.
Wouldn't they use that umbilical cord? And if there is a spill, which I would imagine would be in a ditch is kind of the concern.
There's tile line along the roadway.
Wouldn't the DNR be the one that gets involved with that?
Yes.
So.
The penalty phase, but not the enforcement at the time, they don't want to be called until something bad happens.
Right.
They're not out inspecting the deans and making sure that, you know.
I don't think, I don't know that law enforcement is.
That's just, I'm just asking that we have that discussion.
Yeah.
I think Nick has a very valid point that if you have a policy.
So let's put it on next week's agenda.
Perfect. As long as that coincides with Daryl's schedule and stuff. And, but yeah, I think.
I'd say put it at the end of the agenda so that if anybody doesn't want to listen to a thing, like sign up, meeting at that point.
Sure.
But.
Okay. That's all I have. So.
Well, Meyer pretty quiet. Yeah. Got a whole lot going on. Everything's by phone calls. Not everything. Most of them are by phone.
It's been pretty quiet for most of mine too. I mean, even the meeting that we have with Rocky and Dave and Thomas and I on one base, there's just really.
Region six, region six, a few things have been going on. But I, I think once we start meeting again, it'll be large.
And see, I, with CICS, meeting in person, I don't mind going to Nevada, but I found we get so much more done remotely in about two thirds or a third of the time.
I think everybody's, you know, more conscientious about time when you're on Zoom meetings.
Yeah. I mean, we stay focused and it's like bang, 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 bang.
Zoom too. And I'll tell you, and not, I think there needs, we need to reconsider our policy of you can only be on the board for, what is it, maximum of ten years? Jeff Hoffman is excellent as the chair of the Board of Health. However, he can draw a meeting out.
Yeah.
Pretty often.
Does that everything everybody has? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Much carries.
Thanks for.